Just use their services on an hourly basis as needed. Not 100% of it, but a good portion of those services get billed back to applicants for various items. Oftentimes, we use them as a consultant for internal city administrative things. But for the most part, these get billed forward. So this is their new rates and their new contract, and you know, we can accept it. If we don't like the rates and we can find better rates for the same services, we can certainly, it doesn't hurt us to approve the contract. We can look elsewhere for those services, but even though the rates are going up, they're still on the lower end of what we could get these services rendered for by other agencies.
So approving locking them for the services, we can still look elsewhere to find deeper services if we deem necessary?
Yeah, and actually, Councilmember Purdy, we do. It's not an exclusive agreement. It's just a contractual agreement that we can use them so we don't have to go out for an RFP because they're a government entity service provider. But we do use others subcontractors and have for years. The difficulty is we get really inconsistent approaches. I'm not prepared to discuss it all tonight, but I have reached out to other cities and have kind of thrown out the idea. And I've floated this for a number of years, but I've thrown out the idea maybe now is the time to think about some sort of a shared planning service position with some of the smaller cities. So we're in those discussions. Again, this doesn't lock us into anything. It just provides the service there. If we need it, we can contract with them.
Thanks, yeah, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure.
Thank you, Ron, for the background. We appreciate it.
So do we need a motion to approve?
Yeah, it would be just authorizing me to execute the contract with the Mid-Willemont Valley Council of Governments for, you know, the 2021 contract here.
I move to authorize City Administrator Harding to enter into planning services contract renewal for the years 2020 to 2021 with the Mid Valley Council of Governments.
I'll second down motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Could we have roll call, please? Councilor Bedwell?
Yes.
Councilor Caceres?
Aye.
Councilor Seha?
Yes.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Seeny?
Aye.
That's unanimous vote. Motion passes. And we do have an attendee with their hand up. Katie has her hand up. I don't know if you're taking public comment at this time.
Why don't we wait until after our next one?
Okay.
All right, so City Administrator report?
I should have a fairly quick report. I have a couple of updates and then I believe one general discussion item. So just to update council with the COVID-19, as you probably have noticed, since we've met last, there's been some pretty steep increases in the positive COVID-19 infection rate. Today was really a dismal number for Marion County. I think we had 51 positive cases in Marion County today alone. I watched those really closely and I really watched the Umsville zip code areas. There's something a little off between the Oregon Health Department's numbers and Marion County's numbers, and I'll ask Marion County about that. But obviously, it was something I kind of noticed early on, but it was, I've been watching it a little closer and actually manually tracking it, and I've confirmed. But right now, they show us with 17 positive cases within our zip code. But the last time I reported to you, we had 16 positive cases. And since then, the case number has went up by three. So it really should be 19, and I'm not sure why it's saying 17. So I don't know the specifics around that. But what I do know is we are seeing an uptick in cases in our zip code. I've also watched some of the surrounding areas, and for whatever reason, it may just be the demographics of our population versus some other communities. We seem to, outside of the north portion of the county, we seem to be getting positive test results fairly regularly. So maybe it's because we have more people that work in downtown Salem and they have a, you know, higher infection rate. I'm not sure as to what explains that, but that is the case, and that is that update. From a funding standpoint, just so the general viewers know, one of the things that we do try to do is find backfill money for some of the expenditures related to COVID. We were successful in getting $15,000 in reimbursement for actual cost. Those costs are things that we purchased like masks, hand sanitizer, the glass partition that we're trying to get installed into the City Hall lobby, the sanitation stations, the hand wash these stations, those types of things. So we are able to defer some of that cost that we didn't know when we made those expenditures that we would get reimbursed. There's a lot of soft costs that are not reimbursable, things like the utility account waivers that we've been doing for late fees and disconnection fees and things of that nature. We've been, if somebody tests positive with COVID, we have been helping them with their utility bill or if they have a family member. We've had a really, really low number of people that have approached us. So even though it says 17 cases in the zip code, those folks may not necessarily all reside in the city. The zip code actually goes quite a ways around the city, as most of you are aware. So yeah, those types, any lost revenue cost from, you know, business deferrals or just, you know, general new businesses coming in or different things of that nature isn't captured. We're not able to recapture that number. The state is working on just an economic development grant. The state has, I believe it's in the neighborhood, $900 million that it needs to distribute out to the cities. And I think our legislatures are working the best ways to accomplish that. The last update that I had, there was a plan to try to do a per capita distribution, whether or not that money is just provided to us or if it's a pool of money that we can apply for legitimate tangible expenses to. I'm unclear, but there are a number of, there may be some funding assistance that comes back to the city. From a budgetary standpoint, I still really don't have a lot of concerns. The city has been operating. We've been dealing with land use applications, catching up on backlog work, dealing with all of our utility account holders. We really haven't, other than people coming in and talking to us face to face, not a whole lot has changed. Now, there are some budgetary impacts, as we know. But again, I think they're relatively small for us at this point. So I'm not 100% concerned about those. With the Phase 2 approval from the Governor's Office, she caveated that with a requirement that anybody in a public space must wear a mask, which again creates a whole layer of issues. And staff talked about those things last week. We talked about how will we open up our facilities and meet the guidelines that we'd be required to meet and still be able to maintain services. Some of the difficulty issues that we struggle with center around park use because there's a lot of things in the guidelines about cleaning the restrooms multiple times a day. If the community center is in use, we would have to basically have staff come in after the rental and completely clean the community center before the next rental. And so that causes a number of issues with overtime and comp time and then taking people, you know, out of their normal rotation to be able to do those things. So we would like to go ahead and open up the playgrounds. And one of the alternatives to cleaning is to post the restrooms and the playgrounds with signage that basically says, you know, due to limited resources, the city may not be able to clean the restrooms multiple times a day. And, you know, users of the restroom need to use caution when touching any surfaces. So that's what we think is a good reasonable approach. We are getting more and more requests for people that would like to use the park facilities, and we would like to be able to let them use the park facilities. There's really a lot of inconsistencies around the layers of who can use what, when. And we think a better approach might just be signing everything, saying use these facilities, you know, at your own risk, be careful, cleaning them as often as we can without incurring a hardship on the city staff. As far as community center rentals are concerned, we just are only going to allow that to be used within the limitations of occupancy, maintaining social distancing, and then, and then that the, we're not going to double stack the rentals or the usage. So, you know, if we have a group in there on Sunday morning, I'm not going to pull staff in at time and a half to clean, you know, for a $20 rental in the afternoon. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. So we just won't rent it. So that's kind of our approach, and I wanted to get council's feedback and ask your thoughts. The caveat with that approach is Wildwood Park. Because even though private facilities like this are allowed, we just don't see how we can maintain, you know, the social distancing in that park or enforcing it. We could certainly sign it like we do everything else, but I wouldn't want to give council or the community the false expectation that we somehow could constantly maintain a social distance out there. And so those are the discussion points that I'd like to hear your feedback on.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Um, so I had a quick question, Ron. I agree with your approach, and I just, for just the sake of just, you know, I think, understanding, you know, from a layman's terms, you know, sort of a perspective. Are you kind of modeling kind of what you're doing based off of kind of what other cities are doing? Because I know you're heavily involved, obviously, in those discussions. I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't want to be, you know, the, you know, mean, mean, bad, bad counselor that doesn't let anybody think. But, you know, of course, you know, I, you know, I do see those numbers myself too in the work that I do, and I do see them upticking and obviously, you know, we protect people. Is, you know, just maybe not, you know, not opening ourselves up until things get, I think, hopefully, a little bit better, just maybe a better approach? I mean, you know, kind of.
Yeah, I mean, we have people violating the closures fairly regularly now, and we go out there and basically let them know, even though there's a big sign, you know, we let them know that they're closed. But the difficulty is there's really not a lot of an enforcement mechanism. You know, if people want to not follow the rules, the state really is the one in charge of enforcing it, and we don't really want to be, to be honest with you. I don't know. I certainly don't want the city to be on the news ushering some five and six-year-olds off the playground equipment, you know, and there's so many inconsistencies. I'm concerned about it because I really am concerned about the uptick in numbers. At the same time, I understand everybody's feelings are at a different level. And it seems to me that at this point, with everything, you know, the genie's kind of out of the bottle, so to speak. So it just seems, it just seems to me that at this point, our approach is probably better that we just put some really good signage up throughout the facilities. And obviously, they would only be open during the daytime, and we'd lock them at night like we typically would do any other time. But I think maybe our approach is just really better to put some signage up that says, and this is part of the Governor's Guidelines, there's kind of an either/or. Either you do this, which is our preferred guideline, or if you don't have the resources, you can do this. And the approach that we're, the approach that we're taking is kind of the latter. You know, I mean, we would be cleaning those restrooms and things regularly. We could easily eat up a full FTE throughout the week. And we just don't have the capacity to be able to dedicate that much time. Now, we go out and we clean on, they get cleaned daily. But the approved guidelines or the recommended guidelines require heavier cleaning than that. So I think signing it and saying, listen, we understand everybody's going to assess their own level of risk, and the equipment is open basically at your own risk. We're not regularly cleaning the bathrooms or the equipment for a, you know, a virus. We'd have some wording figured out, but basically, we're not going to do a virus plans multiple times a day. As far as Wildwood Park, that's a, that to me is a whole, it's a little different kind of animal in of itself. And so I'm not really sure what to do about that because, you know, you got kids running around and they're getting wet, they're playing, and, you know, they're running by each other. I don't see how you're going to maintain any type of a physical distance out there. Now, we could sign it the same way, but it's kind of one of those things that we open it at the community's risk or we just don't open it.
So Ron, just a quick comment here. I'm for everything you're saying as far as, you know, opening up the certain parks and keeping the, you know, the kids' water park closed right now. The only caveat that I have is, and I like the signage idea and a lot of signage. The only caveat that I have is I think that the bathrooms should remain closed. A lot of private businesses are keeping their bathrooms closed to the public during this time, and I don't think there's any harm as a government entity to do that. I mean, you're right. People are going down. I was just down walking past the parks and whatnot last week, and even when I drove past them a few times this week, people are already out in the parks and playing, and they're at the skate park and everything. But I think opening up the bathrooms would just encourage people to stay and take those activities where if they were closed down still, it solves two problems. One, it solves the cleanliness issue, and then folks can focus on the playground equipment. And it also solves the issue of people congregating and staying there for long periods of time. So I believe, and like Nico, working in the industry of seeing folks that are exposed to this and the impacts it has, and I believe that, and I said this earlier, that we're going to be at a stage where honestly, all of this conversation is great and all, but we're going to be closing down again. And I just don't see a pathway with the way the spikes are going and with the way people are conducting themselves. I just don't see a pathway that doesn't get us there. So I'm not for opening up a lot of things to just have to shut them back down. I would say very limited amount of opening with lots of signage. And honestly, call me chicken little, but it's frustrating for us to be locked down again.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, Councilmember Bedwell. Two things to address there. One, I'm not 100% sure we could close the bathrooms and open the parks. We might, I'm not sure, but we, you know, I think we could do it, but I'm not sure that that would be something we'd want to have a bathroom somewhere. We've talked about that with the public work staff, and what they've indicated to me is the health risk without having the bathrooms open is much greater because, you know, not that I want to get too graphic, but people still got to use the bathroom, and they will use the bathroom, and without a sanitary facility, they just go.
Yeah, I was just about to, thank you. Like, I get the point of not wanting to open the bathrooms, but like accidents happen, especially with kids. And people have, people have medical problems where they're not going to, like, sometimes they're just not going to make it. And I think we'll be covered with this, like with the signage. As much as I want to keep our town completely safe and put us in a little bubble, I just don't think that's realistic.
Yeah. The other thing I was going to say too, thank you, Councilmember, for jumping in there. The other thing I was going to say is, I'll be honest with you. I really don't see how the state can go back into a full closure at this point. I mean, just gauging, and I was all, I mean, I was supportive of that because nobody knows, nobody really knew what was going on with this virus or how it was going to impact. Obviously, being sheltered in place with limited contact is going to lower the spread and lower the risk. But honestly, with what's occurred since the shelter in place order has been lifted and, you know, the protesters that have been allowed to roam throughout the state and kind of violate those restrictions, I just don't, I just don't see a business that is teetering on the edge of bankruptcy agreeing to that again. I think we're past that. I'll be surprised. I would be, I would be really surprised if we went to that degree again. I honestly think that we're just going to go through these peaks and valleys of spikes, and maybe that'll generate enough concern that people will start self-limiting their activities, and that'll help reduce the spread. But a number of the case increases were really traced back to very specific large group activities, and those I'm discounting. I'm not really looking at the church exposure in La Grande or the Newport fish processing plant exposure. Those were fairly significant numbers. I'm looking at those daily counts. People going to work, people going shopping, people doing those daily things. And it seems to me that they're associated with either, you know, holidays or something of that nature that we're seeing these spikes because you go from, you know, 18 one day to 51 one day, and there has to be something that accounts for that. I don't think it's just human behavior. So yeah, our recommendation from a staff level is that we just, we sign and we open the restrooms, and during the week, we may clean them more regularly than once a day. They may get cleaned two or three times a day, depending on our availability that day. And we'll do the best job we can, but most likely on the weekends, you know, they're either not going to get cleaned or they're going to get cleaned once.
Yeah, and Ron, I think that's, you know, following the same model as what State Parks is doing. They're keeping the restrooms open and just trying to do more cleaning as possible. And I agree with signage, keeping Wildwood closed for now. But I say let's open the rest of the parks up, get the signage up, and if possible, get some Spanish language signage up as well.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, we can definitely get that going. I'll work on some language, you know. I don't want to just say, you know, enter at your own risk. I'd like to say, you know, the city of Umsville values the safety of all of our citizens. You know, at the same time, we want to allow citizens to be able to enjoy the public facility. Something like that. So we'll put, we'll put some language together. So I would like to kind of just, you know, if I could hear everybody's preferences, it sounds like a number of you were okay with the signage. Can I just kind of confirm that with everybody?
I like the signage. I think it's a really great idea.
I'm okay with the signage as well.
Yes, on signage.
I had a question, Ron. I don't want to obviously add to our costs, but would it be possible for us to maybe get an opinion whether or not we'd be covered by potentially recreational immunity given our situation? I support the signage, by the way, but I'm just saying from a point of order standpoint of just making sure that we're covered as best as we can.
Yeah, well, we're covered by liability insurance in the event that anybody sues, but we are following the Governor's Guidelines with the signage. So the Governor's Guidelines are not, it's not an executive order. The guidelines are, our executive order is, you know, you can open all these businesses. The guidelines to opening these businesses are X, Y, Z. The executive order that she put in place that really crosses that spectrum is the mandatory wearing mask in any public space. And so, you know, everybody has a different opinion about that. Some people are adamantly against the government saying you have to wear a mask. You know, from my perspective, I want everybody to be as safe as possible, and to me, that's fine. Regardless of if somebody told me I had to wear a mask, I'm wearing one. But that's my personal choice, and I understand that people are leery of that. So, you know, from our perspective, it would just be that, you know, we have to follow the Governor's executive orders as part of our oath of office. We have to follow the laws of the state, and an executive order is a law. So if she says masks have to be worn in public spaces, we'll require that in all of our public spaces for all of our activities just because we'll follow that, and we won't serve people that aren't following that directive. That's just how we'll handle it. As far as enforcement out in the community, you know, we'll tell if we see blatant violations, you know, we're going to go into those businesses and tell them that we're going to report that they're not following these executive orders. But that's really about as far as we're going to go from a city standpoint.
Right.
So, and to answer your question about COVID liability. So, and, and to answer your question about COVID liability, um, nobody knows, Nico. It's completely, it is completely so untested um that nobody knows if people try to sue, you know, their employers um uh or businesses that they frequent, or, you know, the government for not protecting them. Really, it's all up in the air what's gonna happen with liability. So even if we'd contacted um, you know, CIS, they would just, they're just gonna shrug, shrug their shoulders at us, basically. It's just so uncharted territory.
I was just asking, because I'm, I'm already hearing the radio ads for uh ambulance chaser and stuff like that, which, I, I, I mean, we all knew that was going to happen anyway, but I didn't think it happened so soon, unfortunately, but, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's, it's definitely going around. So, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with our plan to open um the parks except for Wildwood, um, and we'll put up signage. Now, do you have a specific date? Do you want to see how it goes in the, in the next two weeks? Uh, what is your preference with Wildwood? Because I am getting a number of contacts from people um irritated that the park's not open. Uh, and I've, you know, I've let those folks know that we would, we would be discussing it tonight. Um, I've also let them know that there's just a lot of issues with trying to administer the, the opening and try to keep people safe, but um I really need some direction from you guys on that.
Personally, I think a couple of weeks is a little too short. I know that it's hot, I, and I get it, and I know that, but we get, Wildwood gets pretty packed in the summer, and there's people that come from Salem to come up to our little water park. So, I, I would go as to say, at least a month before we discuss it again. I don't know how everyone else feels. We're gonna be
How about this is, if it's okay, what if it just, what if COVID-19 response in general uh in Wildwood uh being a, a subheader under that is just an agenda item that we say we leave on the agenda for at least the next three to four council meetings? That way, it's always something that we come back to and have conversation about, and it also shows the public that it's not something that we forgot about, that we're still continuing in conversation and making decisions on it.
Yeah, I don't see a point to putting a timeframe on it. I think we can just, again, take it up at each council meeting to see how things are progressing and deal with it then.
I've also heard that a lot of cities are not opening splash parks this summer period. So that might be something we consider too. You open the rest of it up and just leave that park closed.
Yeah, but I don't, still don't see the, the problem of just uh keeping it on the agenda, talking about it, and uh, again, if things aren't getting better, then we don't have to, to move forward with opening it. Uh, at a point where we do wind up keeping it closed all summer, but I, I think we can still have those conversations regularly.
So, would you guys, I, I was gonna say, would you be open to opening the park but not the water feature?
Honestly, I would keep the whole park closed for right now. Don't, don't even confuse it. Just keep it closed. We have the other parks that are gonna open up. I mean, that's
Yeah, I feel the same way. Just keep it closed.
Yeah, I wouldn't open any part of that Wildwood. I, I just, just would.
I personally, I would not open Wildwood at all, you know, at least for the foreseeable future, and, you know, um, I would just term of the uh splash park being, you know, closed especially until further notice, you know, and that we will um assess as the uh circumstances obviously evolve and change. And that's kind of what, I think that's the kind of approach we should take, honestly. Uh, you know, there'll be some other, I mean, yeah, it sucks having splash park closed, but I think there's other alternatives that uh folks can uh take part in, you know, in the meantime. I mean, I know the pool's opening up on July 6th, you know, the Berklin Pool, so that'll be good, but um, you know, I think just from a safety perspective, I think us being prudent on that would be incredibly uh wise.
All right.
To make it clean, Ron, do you need a motion from us?
No, I, I just really need some direction from you guys. I mean, I think uh there's, there's plenty of uh, there's plenty of um authority given in, in 505 and 4, 432 um that allows me to open the parks or close the parks. It's just, you know, in, in this day and age, everything is so dicey of what people are gonna be upset about, and I, and understandably upset about, but you just never know where, where that balance is between uh providing uh safety for the community and, and, and at the same time, the perception that the community has value in, in the facilities that are publicly owned. So, I really just needed the discussion to hear you guys say that, that that's the direction that you wanted to take. And I expect over the next two weeks, uh, you're gonna hear uh from more and more constituents um about it, so you'll, you'll just want to be prepared um, you know, to talk to them about the rationale behind it. And, and uh, Della may be correct, you know, it, it could very well be that um, you know, we just decided this is not the summer for splash parks. Um, I don't know. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I don't know where that answer, uh, where that answer lies. Um, on one hand, I'm concerned. On the other hand, it's really hard to make a rational argument um of why you're doing these things when other things are happening throughout the state that people are seeing. Uh, and they're like, why, you know, why am I doing this when apparently these people don't have to, to do it? So, it's, it's really just that, but um, that discussion. But I, there are a lot of other opportunities for folks to uh provide recreation. Um, you know, it may not necessarily be in the city, but in the surrounding areas, so um people may just have to alter, or alter that scheduled activity. Um, I, I know nobody's happy about it, but unfortunately, these are kind of uncharted waters for us. So, all right, no, I've got enough direction from you all. So, uh, just so that you're in the loop of what's going on, uh, what we're doing from an operational standpoint. We did order, um, as you know, and I've said this before, a glass partition for the City Hall lobby, and we did that. I mean, I ordered that thing back in um, it was April, so it was really early on in this. We just made a decision that we were gonna, this wasn't gonna be a short-run virus. And um unfortunately, so did everybody else. I'll order, order these partitions, and we got down and bought Plexiglas while we were still open, and I think we got like a two-day, two days ahead of the uh run on Plexiglas at the, at the local improvement stores. And, you know, today, uh, you're hard-pressed to find um Plexiglas, and the same with regular glass. It's just, a lot of people are buying that to create partitions and, and separate folks. So, um, we'll continue to work on that. I'll, I'll try to get an update on what's going on. They said a six-week window on the outside. It's been more than six weeks, so um we'll, we'll have to find out what's going on with that contractor uh on that. But, once that gets installed, um, we'll probably go ahead and set a schedule to open City Hall. Um, I really, based on, I mean, even if it got installed this week, I wouldn't open the next day. Um, we'd go through some uh procedures on exactly how we're gonna handle um opening the lobby and uh making sure people have masks. And uh we do have uh a quantity of masks that we can hand out to folks that come to City Hall if they don't have one. Um, and then uh just procedures on how we're gonna deal with people coming in. Uh, we only want one person in the lobby at a time, and um we can put up signage, but as you know, not everybody reads the signs as they're walking in, so uh we'll want to work on some procedural uh changes that we'll use um as far as that's concerned for opening. So, once that wall gets installed, my guess is we'll have a two- or three-day delay uh before we actually open the lobby. I expected, honestly, it to be by the first of June, so we're, we're well past um my ex- expectations. Um, talking about what other cities are doing, I know uh Councilmember Cesaraz had mentioned this earlier. Um, uh, the cities are really all over uh the, the board on what they're doing. Some cities are actually ramping up their um activities from a cautionary standpoint, and they're actually going into more of a lockdown from a city operational perspective. And some cities are just kind of, uh, you know, um, one person comes into City Hall at a time, and they don't really have any barriers, and they don't wear any masks or anything like that. Now, of course, that's all gonna change as of Wednesday with the governor's executive order. Um, but really, they're, the cities are really just all over the dynamic on how they're approaching this. And I think the larger cities are taking um, uh, you know, they're taking a risk-adverse approach, which is kind of what I tend to do to some extent. We talked about liability, and that is putting everything in place that we can put in to make sure that we're um, we're providing every caution that, that we can provide. And that's what most cities, I think, are doing. But a lot of your, you know, smaller jurisdictions may be shooting a little bit more from the, from the hip, but I think largely, a lot of them are, are all still in lockdown mode of some kind. All right, so then, the only other thing on my agenda is, um, my recommendation is, uh, even though this uh, from a technical standpoint, this uh meeting did not execute exactly the way that we'd planned, I would recommend that our next meeting be a Zoom meeting as well.
All right.
I'm, I'm okay with a Zoom meeting.
I don't bother me.
Fine with me, too.
I'll be the only one out there then, because I prefer the in-person meetings, but uh I will follow along in this one.
I think we'd all prefer the in-person, but there are some risks that some of us can't take, so. Okay, do we have any council reports? Colleen, do we have anyone that wants to say anything from the audience?
Katie had her hand up earlier. Katie, do you still want to talk?
I believe she's muted still.
This is Katie, and no, that was a mistake, sorry.
Okay. Hey, anyone else that wishes to speak?
I do have a, a topic of discussion I'd like to bring up.
All right.
Uh, Ron, do you have, are you able to present what I had shown you earlier?
Um, I can read it off of the email if you'd like, but would you like to, would you like to talk to the council about it, and then, and then I can read?
Yeah. Yeah, so uh one of the things that I've been thinking about um with everything that's going on, um, not necessarily as much in our community as, as the surrounding areas, uh with the calls for defunding police agency and um, you know, some of the attacks that I've seen uh in media on our law enforcement officers. And uh, you know, I, I just want to make clear how much I appreciate our Amesville police officers and the work that they do in uh, you know, going out there every day. Uh, most of you know that uh I have an extensive history in law enforcement and regulatory services, and uh, you know, I, I think that, that what we see going around um is very demoralizing to those officers that have committed their lives to serving us and uh the members of our community. And so, I would like to, to present um a resolution of support for our, our police officers. Um, we need them. Uh, nothing shows that anymore than uh what happened this weekend um with the uh high-profile arrests that went down. You know, those people living in our communities, affecting the safety of our communities, and our officers stepped up and uh took care of the situation. And I think uh, you know, just us in leadership, making a, a public statement about how important our officers are, and that um, you know, any, any behavior that is not appropriate will be dealt with swiftly. Uh, you know, I, I think that would go a long way towards uh boosting morale of our officers and making sure that they know that they are wanted here, and that we need them here. So, do you want to read that, Ron, or do you want me to?
Um, yeah, did you want to read it with my suggested change, or did you want it the way that you presented it?
Uh, it's got your change suggestions in there as well.
Oh, okay. Did you send it to me later then? You should go ahead and read it then, Larry, because I don't know that I have your updated version.
Okay, yeah, I'll read it, and uh, you know, I'm, I'm open for suggestions from everybody on it. So, um, what, what I'm proposing for, for wording here is, "The Amesville City Council thanks all our law enforcement officers for their dedicated work, often at the risk of personal injury or death, and sacrifice to their own personal family lives to protect our community. We assure you that we will continue to support your efforts with funding based on availability and not on any political movement, resources, training, and tools. We recognize that the overwhelming majority of law enforcement officers follow the law. For those few law enforcement officers who may engage in unlawful conduct, we call for swift, sure, and fair accountability." So, that, that's what I have. I'd love to hear uh from the others on council.
Would you mind reading it again, Larry?
Yeah, let me get back to it here. "The Amesville City Council thanks all our law enforcement officers for their dedicated work, often at the risk of personal injury or death, and sacrifice to their own personal family lives to protect our community. We assure you that we will continue to support your efforts with funding based on availability and not on any political movement, uh, resources, training, and tools. We recognize that the overwhelming majority of law enforcement officers follow the law. For those few law enforcement officers who may engage in unlawful conduct, we call for swift, sure, and fair accountability."
I have no problem with that.
So, um, I, I guess let me just open up a little bit of discussion about it. Originally, when Larry approached me with this, I told him that, you know, based on our process, this would have to come forward for council uh discussion. Um, uh, just because, you know, council can't, it take, it takes a majority of council to put something on the agenda for an action item like this. And I will tell you, I kind of have mixed feelings about it. Um, uh, although my concern is uh less so in its current version, um, uh the current state that, that Larry currently has it worded. So, one of my main concerns, um, and just for some historical background, I hope I don't go off on a story here or tangent, but um, just for historical background, um, uh, there, the, the city, I, I've really tried to get all city departments to work um as a group, as a team, all working together, um, integrated in providing services, even though our areas of service may be different. And historically, that wasn't always the case. And so, I get concerned about singling out um a particular branch, uh, because it, what it does is it, it builds a internal um bias uh with other employees that think that their service to this community um is just as, as valuable, and it is, and it is, as, as other things. So, I really worked hard not to single out I really worked hard not to single out, um, the law enforcement department of, of our community separately and hold them to a, um, pedestal different, uh, than the others. So just as an operational manager, I, I don't really agree with these types of resolutions in general, uh, because of, um, uh, just because of that. And I think making a statement, one way, whether it's to support law enforcement, just as a political statement, it to me is just as inappropriate as making a political statement, um, to defund law enforcement. Either of those to me is inappropriate. Because to me, um, our law enforcement, um, level of funding and service to the community should be contingent on, um, the need that we have, not, other, not these other outside forces. And it really pains me to see these other communities having these discussions because from an operational standpoint, the, that, that's, that's like making a decision based on none of the rational, um, information whatsoever. So generally I'm opposed to these. However, in its current form, uh, the way Larry has written it, I think, I think what the statement says is, um, we just want to communicate to the community that we're not going to do what everybody else has done. We're not going to make these statements based on political, um, affiliations. We're going to make these decisions on public safety based on, uh, the need and the desire of the community. And maybe you could just say that, insert that somewhere in there. Um, but that, that's just how I feel about it in general. Now you could do a resolution. You could just do a general statement if you like the wording. If you do a resolution, that'll have to come back for a vote at a future meeting and we'll have to prepare it. Um, so that's really.
I have a question. So like, I'm not saying like, so I was quiet because I was trying to form in my head on how to respond this, how to respond correctly. And I think Ron, you explained it really well. Uh, thank you. Like I, I couldn't have explained it better. I, I myself have mixed feelings. My question is, is there really? Has there been ongoings in the community that I'm not aware of that would require such a resolution? I would, I, I'm not, I don't know. I'm like, like I said, it's hard. I have, I have very mixed feelings about everything that has been going on. And I think there's a lot of, there's just a lot of political issues and I don't know if it's our place to, to make a, a statement one way or another. I completely support our police officers and I support all our staff. I think we have an amazing, an amazing city staff. I think, uh, for a small town community that we have, our staff have done amazing things. And you're right, to single out one department more than the other, I, I would feel it's not okay. And then like, I, I also want our police officers to understand that we do need them. You're right, Larry. We need them. And I don't want them to think that, uh, at one point where like we don't want them around. At, at the same time, I want our, I want our residents to feel that if there was an injustice upon them by our police officers, that they could come forward. Said, I don't know. I'm not, I'm just not comfortable at this point, making that type of resolution. I don't know if it's our place to.
I've, I've added to the chat so you guys can actually see what, what I've drawn up. And, uh, you know, I, I would address that, uh, I, I don't see this as singling out any particular department. You know, we could easily do the same thing for every other department because, you know, they're all very important too, but they're not the ones that are getting attacked in, in the media. And again, I'm not saying that, that our particular Almsville police officers are facing that. I don't know. Um, maybe, maybe they are. But I know as a former family, uh, member of law enforcement, law enforcement, um, is not like most other jobs. There, there are connections. Doesn't matter what color uniform you wear or what agency you work for. If you're a police officer, you're a police officer and you're a brother or sister of every other police officer out there. And when one gets attacked, everybody feels it. When there's, there's cries out there and from members of the public in certain areas that, uh, you know, are, are painting all law enforcement officers as bad actors. You know, I'll be the first to say there are bad actors out there, just like in any job, any profession. But I don't think that, um, you know, that by any means, it's a majority of law enforcement officers. By far, like I put in this, in this suggested wording, the overwhelming majority of law enforcement officers are good people that are, that are working a job to serve their communities. And I, I don't see the harm in, in recognizing that.
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, I don't know. That would, like I said, that's just my, and Larry, I, you know, I, I volunteered at the police department from the time I was 16 up until in my twenties as a reserve officer. Like I get it. Like the, the attacks on the good police officers out there, like, you know, it's hard. It's hard for me to sit and, and watch it. And it's also hard to see a, a lot of injustice going on being somebody that's, uh, uh, you know, like somebody that's not Caucasian, like, I just don't, I just don't know if it's the city's place to make a, a statement. I wouldn't feel comfortable. I, but there are seven of us on council. So like those are everyone else's opinions. This is why we're here.
Can I chime in if, uh, I may?
Yes, please.
Um, I just want to make the statement here, both for the public record and for anybody listening, you know, I a hundred percent support our officers and the job they do. Um, you know, it's, you know, the jobs involved, especially in the last, I think 10 to 15 years, you know, where, you know, you're seeing officers not necessarily being the ones that throw down the hammer, you know, and, uh, you know, trying to, you know, get you, you know, in the most highest, you know, consequences possible, but you're seeing a lot of circumstances where, you know, they're having to play mom and daddy, you know, mommy and daddy to a lot of people, you know, where they're having to step up and, you know, take a little collection between themselves to buy somebody diapers to, um, you know, uh, you know, chuck up on people that have no family, that have no support systems that, you know, they got to make sure they have food on the table. They have, um, you know, their needs somewhat met, you know, and, I just want to make it very clear, you know, that I, I support the things our law enforcement are doing. They're doing things that, um, you know, I don't think anybody envisioned, you know, um, you know, 20, 30 years ago, they're having to do, they're having to step up and, you know, be a support system, be social worker, be, you know, the connector of resources to people that, you know, are vulnerable to people that have, um, you know, everyday problems, getting, you know, getting their medication, you know, getting their, um, food on the table. And, you know, I give them kudos. Um, you know, I, you know, they went out of their way when my family had their fire, had the fire at the house, you know, last year, they were, uh, the first there on the scene to make sure that everything was okay. And I want to make it very obvious and very clear that I support our officers and the job they do. And, um, you know, I, in every, almost every instance I've engaged with them, you know, they've been very professional, been very, um, you know, um, communicative with, you know, our citizens and, and, you know, with my family too, you know, and, and figuring out ways to handle situations in lieu of just, you know, okay, you screwed up here. We're going to go ahead and charge you with the maximum possible, you know, fine or ticket. So, you know, I, I really want to give my support and hat off to them for the job they do. On the same token, I'm just not sure that this resolution, um, you know, adds, you know, any value to, you know, um, what's going on. I think we can be obvious about our praise for our department and the job that police officers do. And I think we should be. I think we should, you know, definitely amplify that and beat the drum as much as possible. Cause I mean, you know, it's, it's not as simple as them pulling people over. It's not as simple as them arresting people. It's a much more complex job than it was, you know, in the past. And, you know, I think we need to give them their kudos, but on the same token though, I feel like, um, you know, there's some real concerns that are out there in terms of accountability, in terms of, um, the level of, uh, professionalism, the level of, you know, um, you know, oversight that there is over police departments. And I'm not speaking to ours specifically. Ours does an amazing job, but I just, I think there's circumstances, you know, beyond our control that, um, you know, there's political unions, there's political groups, you know, there's people that are, you know, obviously being on, you know, unruly and that are, you know, tearing down statues that are, you know, destroying things. And, you know, I'm not a big fan of that, but I think as far as people being able to present their concerns in a professional way and to exercise their First Amendment rights, to be able to express those concerns, I think that should be supported. And personally, I've always been someone that I may not like the message. I may not like, you know, the viewpoint, but you know, you sure as hell can bet that I'm going to go to bat for you and I'm going to give you that opportunity to be able to speak up in a peaceful way on what your views are. And I don't, you know, I, I wouldn't be supportive of a resolution of this kind because, you know, I think that we need to be supportive of everyone's viewpoints and create an environment in which people are allowed to speak up when they feel like, you know, uh, law enforcement, when they feel like government itself can do a better job. So, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not very supportive of this med, this resolution at all in current form. And I think that, um, you know, we can do, um, other, in other ways, we can, you know, show praise for our police force and for law enforcement in general, without the need for us to be able to have to pass this. And that's kind of just my personal feeling, you know, I, I think that we can be both supportive of law enforcement and be supportive of people that, feel like that, you know, agencies and government in and of itself can do a better job with how they, uh, deal with, you know, enforcing our laws and deal with people that are allegedly, you know, that are alleged to have committed a crime. I think, I think we can have those conversations and we need to have those conversations. And I feel like we can support, you know, constructive conversation from all sides. I think it'll be better, you know, in moving, moving, you know, policy decisions forward. And that's personally kind of how I feel about the situation.
So I do have a suggestion, um, because like I said earlier, typically I don't, I'm not a big fan of these types of blanket resolutions, but in this particular case, I, I don't think the wording of this, uh, you know, maybe a tweak here or there, but I really don't think the wording of this really sets a blanket tone. Um, and Larry, I, I, I assume from our previous conversations.
I don't know if you guys can hear this bumped out. I'm trying to get back on.
Okay. We can hear you. But I'm assuming from our conversations is this is a message that you want to make sure that we communicate to our officers as much as to anyone else. I'm wondering if council would be supportive of us just adding this language on our website, uh, on the police opening page rather than, you know, a, a, a resolution that just says exactly what this says. It's a one paragraph statement, um, that communicates to our officers and to the community that, you know, we support our officers for their dedicated service. And, you know, we're not going to make decisions based off of political movements, but rather the resources available and needs to the community. I, I think that message is not a bad message. I just get concerned about what some of the negative impact that you, you all have already discussed, uh, could be. Does that, would that, uh, Larry, would that, uh, do what you are intending to have it do?
I would not object to that option. Um, yeah. I kind of look at it like, uh, you know, when I have an employee working for me at my day job that, uh, does great work. In addition to, to telling them that, I like to give them something, something in writing that says, great job. They can put that on their wall. They can, you know, give them a plaque that says, thank you for your service. And again, in a time like this where I know they have to be feeling demoralized with some of this going on, that any way that we can, uh, put something in writing to just boost their morale and say, you know, we truly appreciate you and, you know, want you to, to stay here and be happy in your job. And we value, uh, your commitment to our community.
Yeah.
So Ron, if I can get real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, I, I just want to say it, and, and I've had these kind of conversations with several other people. Obviously throughout the last few weeks, uh, especially in the work that I do, talking about diversity, equity, inclusion, that type of thing. When it comes to, and law enforcement and it's just a, you know, as, as everybody's mentioned, it's just a very difficult time in our history right now that, and, and a lot's just going on. Um, and so when I'm, you know, when I'm thinking about this and, and looking at this from my perspective, I totally get what everybody's saying. I get what Larry's saying about, you know, this is a great way to support our police force and show them that we care about them and we care about the work that they do. And there's value in that work. And, and I get what I'm hearing, you know, Angie and Nico talking about, you know, um, is this a time and, and, you know, and, and pulling different departments, like you said, Ron. I think for me, my biggest concern is, um, is somebody taking what we're trying to do for good and turning it into a negative. We're in a time where, I truly believe that if you stand up and say you support police force, uh, right now, there's lots of people that are going to be like, hey, that's great. We really appreciate that. But there's more people with louder, um, blowhorns or, or media or whatever you want to say it, that will use it for negative. And, um, you know, just a few things to kind of point out about our police force. We are a small community. We have a small police force. Correct me if I'm wrong, wrong, Ron, but we have an all male, white police force, correct?
I, I don't know. I don't know if I would characterize our entire department that way because we have some reserve officers and I'm not sure that I know the, heritage of every officer, but generally, yes.
Okay. And so I, I think these are things that somebody who wants to spin what we're trying to do for good would potentially spin as a negative. Um, and, and so I think if there's ways, I don't, I don't want to see this die. I'll be honest with you. I like Larry's idea. I really do like the idea of finding a way, especially in this time, in a very difficult time and full transparency. I have a son who's a cop in the military. So like Larry, I have a vested interest in, in how do we do this? But how do we do this in a manner that is productive? Not to take away from other city officials and also doesn't put us in a place where somebody can take what we're trying to do for positive and turn it into something really negative. That's probably my biggest concern is that, is the people who come out here and go, oh, look at this little small town Almsville, you know, and, and, and dig into things about our police force. So we don't, we, I mean, I just don't want to see them do that. And anybody who says, well, they wouldn't do that, I'd hate to tell you, but we've seen some of that. I mean, and so I just, I think if we can find a way that'll make it work, I think we should do it. In some capacity, I just want us to be very mindful of it.
That's, I think that, that's kind of the direction I was going as well. Um, to me, if we're going to do something like that, I would, it would have to, we would have to find a way to make it as diversified as possible. Uh, I like a little video of, and, and I, okay, this is going to sound terrible. We would, it would have to be as diversified as possible. And I'm sorry, our town has not had a great history until recently of community outreach and working with diversity. And it, and that's part of the reasons I ran and, um, so it's in part of the problems it's, and part of the problems that were seen on the news is because of lack of, of uh, agencies working with people of diverse, different colors and rings. And I'm not saying that our police department has done that, but if we're going to say, hey, guys, we love you, let's keep on going. You're right. People, there are, are few people that are gonna spin it the wrong way. And then there's people that are gonna be really upset. Um, so it was, that's what I, that's what I was trying to say. I don't know that it's hard. I don't know if, if it's the towns. I don't know if it's our place to to make a stand like that. It would have to be something that we, we talk more about and figure out.
Well, so I'll, I'll just chime in here because I, I want to make sure that we're, we're getting to kind of the heart and soul of this. So, um, uh, what I've heard from everybody overwhelmingly is that you do support, you do have a very deep support for local law enforcement. You think, you value their service and you think they've done a good job. Uh, just as a blanket statement, would you say that's a fair characterization?
As Council Bedwell, I'll say yes. I, I one hundred percent agree with that statement, especially in the city of Almazville.
So I, to me, and here's where I was going with this. To me, me, I think a statement like this, um, has the most meaning to the officers themselves, not necessarily, um, I think that the meaning is deeper that they get that communicated from you to them, not necessarily that it's communicated to the world, which is then what opens up a lot of these concerns. And I can think of, you know, a number of ways um, we could communicate that. Uh, Larry had mentioned recognizing people with, you know, something in writing. We, we certainly could do that. We could, we could send something to each of the officers and certainly we have time that we could wordsmith it and bounce it back and forth. Um, we can do a plaque for each of the officers and at the-
Let's buy them all coffee and-
Yeah, you know, we could send them a, yeah, it's just something that says, we really value and appreciate your services in this time uh, that our country is going through. Uh, we understand that it's a difficult time for you. We support you. Honestly, those are the words that are the most meaningful. And I think that there's a lot of things, I guess, that we could do um, that would not have some of these risks to them, would satisfy everybody's concerns and be, be as meaningful or more meaningful to the officers. And certainly the chief and I can get together if you guys so wanted us to and we could, uh, figure out a way to, to develop something. And, and, and I do agree and, and the chief and I have talked about this. I do agree that when law enforcement in general is being attacked, the chief and I probably had a two hour conversation about this today because we're not just thinking about what's happening this week or next week or next month or even next year. But, uh, from an operational standpoint, he and I are thinking about what happens three years from now and four years from now because what's going on i- with what's happening across the country is, uh, first of all, the, there's been a, uh, uh, there, there hasn't been a large enough pool of people wanting to be officers coming in and qualifying. There's a lot of people that want to be officers. Uh, but there is a screening process despite what the news media would, would have you think. Um, and not everybody qualifies. Uh, you know, not everybody, uh, makes it, uh, through that process. And so, you know, you've got a very limited pool of folks, uh, to draw on. And then training is grossly expensive. Uh, and then you get somebody trained and then there's this constant competition. So, uh, you have more officers across the country retiring than what you're ever gonna have joining and, and making the standard uh, right now in what's currently happening. And we're gonna see a negative impact on it. And it won't be maybe today or tomorrow or next month or even next year, but within the, within the coming years, you're gonna start to see a negative impact because you're gonna have less seasoned officers. You're gonna have lower number of officers. And think about it. Um, uh, you know, unless you had a deep passion to be a law enforcement officer above all else in life, why would you want to enter that profession? It's not like you make, you know, I mean, they make good money, but there, there's a lot of things that you can make a lot better money at than law enforcement. They put their lives at risk. And now, um, even if they're following the rules, they potentially risk, um, you know, being charged with doing something wrong. Um, because, uh, where, you know, I'm not gonna justify what, um, and I'm not gonna single out any particular officers, but some officers clearly don't do the right thing. Uh, but some try to do the right thing. Um, but, but in the midst of performing those duties, you know, it's unpredictable, things happen. But all of those folks right now are being held to a standard that honest, honestly is somewhat unprecedented. And uh, for the life of me, I would never, I would never, I would never pin on that badge myself. Um, and so having a positive message is not a bad thing in the midst of, of this chaos, what's going on. And I, and I don't want my opening comments to, uh, to, to mean that. Um, it was really just about, there's risk. Um, you know, you don't want to demoralize your other departments while trying to, um, uh, uplift, uh, a, a single department. But I think we could come up with something either, uh, some sort of a plaque or appreciation that comes from the city council, uh, not from the city, but from the city council to, um, our officers that let them know that we're thinking about them during this time. We support, um, um, you know, we, uh, we understand that this, that they're, um, you know, that they're having to put themselves at great risk uh, to keep our community safe and, and we don't want that to be lost. I, I think we could do something like that if that's what you guys wanted to do.
I would definitely be in favor of something, I think, more localized, um, as far as giving, I mean, if we're gonna, you know, talk about recognition and support, let's do it for, you know, uh, you know, our guys. And I think that's, I think where the focus should be. Um, I mean, because at the end of the day, you know, whether we like it or not, you know, other jurisdictions are going to make their decisions on, uh, you know, what they constitute to be fair funding, you know, fair policies, you know, and, and that's on them, you know, I mean, you know, they, you know, you know, we make similar decisions in other areas, you know, I mean, you know, that you have the consequence, you have the benefits. It'll be up to them, you know, if they're gonna, you know, cut fifty million dollars from their police fund, you know, to, uh, be able to experience that firsthand. And it's not really, you know, I think our place necessarily, you know, weigh in on other jurisdictions. And I think what we can do the most good is by giving, you know, our guys and our employees, you know, the, the best recognition that we could give them. I think that's where we, I think, uh, approach things honestly.
So like I said, this, to start this off with, this was a suggestion from me. I wanted to disperse some discussion. I think it's been great discussion. I appreciate everybody's input on it. And, uh, you know, I, I want to, I, I want our officers here to know how much we value them. Like I've said several times, yeah. If the best way to do that is, uh, is not the, what I'm suggesting here, but, uh, you know, doing something individualized for all of them, I'm fine with that. Um, you know, I, I, I just can't stress enough how important it is for them to know that they are truly valued here. So Ron, it sounds like we kind of reached maybe a consensus point. Um, does, does everybody want to have, uh, Ron and Chief Schmitz kind of work on, uh, coming up with some way of recognizing the officers?
I would say, yeah, like, um, whether it's pizzas or coffees or cards or a co- or gift cards, um, something that lets them know and like we can all sign it. Or, um, well, we would have to go in and sign it or Ron and Colleen can sign it on, on, on behalf of us.
I, I will just say, I, I think if there's a way that we can sign it, going back to Ron's comment about coming from the council versus the city. I think, I think if there's a way that we can sign it, um, or even the, the mayor or the president of the council sign it, um, or the council, I think that would be good. Um, I, I think the other thing is, and I don't know, this might be a slippery slope suggesting this, but uh, another thought could be is if we've got any positive comments that have come in from the community that we could kind of draw from to put into, um, the, the letter, uh, or, or, you know, plaque or however we plan on doing it in the end, but it's just something from the community that's there that we can draw from as well. Um, but I do, I do think, um, you know, Larry, um, you know, Larry's got the idea of, of, you know, this is definitely a time to, to reinforce the value that they provide to the community. So I think what, whatever we can do there, that would be hugely helpful.
Well, let me suggest this. Let, let the chief and I get together with our other staff. Uh, look at what's available out there. You know, we do appreciation things for, for staff. I, I was thinking of something a little, um, yeah, definitely from the council, but maybe a little bit more substantial than a card or a letter. Um, and, um, what we'll do is, uh, once we come up with some ideas, we'll bet that with Larry, since this was his suggestion. And, uh, see how much of the language we can incorporate from, um, from this memo that Larry put together. And, uh, and then we'll come back, uh, we can have a, we can have a direction by the next council meeting. And we can, uh, present that and let, you know, council put their seal of approval that you like it or don't like it before we pull the trigger. Does that sound like a fair direction?
Sure.
Are you good with that, Larry?
I am. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So the chief and I will work, uh, work on that, um, and we'll, we'll move forward. I have to just make a blanket statement, um, to council and, and I will tell you that I am very proud of all of our staff and it includes the police department. And, and as I discussed earlier, I don't know why anybody would want to do that job, to be honest with you, i- in, in today's current environment. I'm glad that we have people that want to do it. And I'm glad that we've got folks that care about our community and want to provide that service here. Um, um, but really all of our staff through this entire process with, with the COVID, I mean, who knew that we were gonna go into some, you know, um, national riot situation and everything else in the middle of this pandemic. But um, I will just tell you that from my position, um, our staff have all um, worked admirably through this entire thing. And um, I, I wish I had a way or a pool of, of funds to, to recognize all of their sacrifices because e- even though we may not be coming into the office every day, I guarantee you that I have staff that are working um, who knows what hours. Sometimes I get emails from certain staff members at eight, nine o'clock at night um, because they had been working on something. And um, you know, they're, they're really working hard to make sure that our services are uh, being as good as they possibly can in the middle of this, uh, this pandemic. And that goes across the board with police and public works. And I could go on and tell you stories about um, stuff that our, our staff has done. Um, there's, there's plenty, there's plenty of admirable stories there. They certainly have not just been sitting on their hands. They've done a great job.
Thank you, staff. You guys rock. Much appreciation legitimately.
Agreed. I think we can all agree to that one.
Here, here.
I have nothing else to report.
Okay. Um, any other business that anyone has to bring up? Not, um, I do want to make a comment that there was a, a little note from Rachel about maybe putting a sign that community members could sign on the building for police and- Make sure we make note of, too.
That'd be awesome.
If Rachel's still on the line, Rachel, can you send me an email, uh, with a little bit more, um, about your idea? I kind of like it. Send me an email.
She says she'll do.
Okay.
All right. So, um, I will let everyone know I am going to be sending an evaluation out for Ron's review. It's time for that. And I would hopefully get it out tomorrow to you. And then um, if I could have it back by July eighth, then we could have it ready for the next meeting. So, and with that, if there's nothing else, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-nine.
Bye, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.